This is concerning me too. And one of the suggestions I've made, and I'll make again at the workshop, is that we need to have a longer-range plan by department. And one of the things I've suggested in police areas is break it down into segments like schools. And look at that, you know, on a longer-range projected. And what can we do with technology and all kinds of other things to sort of leverage the force we have out there to do exactly what you're asking.
Example. I think that's an excellent suggestion. Yeah. And to, you know, partner, you know, how can we leverage our police force with partnering with, you know, other organizations for safety? And then...
And we do a lot of that.
And you do?
We do.
Okay.
It's not, you know, specifically listed up there, but I know the police department is engaged regionally. They're engaged with the schools. They work with the schools on their various fairness plans, the response plans. The schools are obligated under state law to have their own plans, and we contribute to those, and we exercise with them when they do, and provide feedback to them. I know the chief meets regularly with Maurice Keschels, I don't know if you can pronounce his last name.
Keschels.
Yeah. To talk about those sorts of things. And Chief, you wanted to say anymore about that?
Yeah. With Mr. Carlson, the County Chiefs Association, Sheriff's Association is taking on this broader scope of safety on schools. You were concerned about consistency in terminology and approaches, and so there's a number of summits coming up. There's one that I, well, I attended one last week on Redwood City's presentation. And we want to see all of the law enforcement jurisdictions within San Mateo County and even the county south of us, basically, you know, working off the same shooting laws as it were, with respect to our response. So it really has got the attention of a lot of folks. There's a lot of work going on up behind the scenes. And we start out our school year, every year, with the city manager came by and some of you have, with a school meeting with all of our schools and the faculty, and we talk about issues and problems. And so it very much is a large part of our recruitment. And with the reduction of staff, when we look at the 10 years, one of the things we had was a school resource officer that just focused, was on campus, was doing those things, you know, five days a week, and then doing some things during the summer as well. But any public schools are...
There's nine. Nine or 10. It depends on how many count.
Yeah, there's, I guess there could be 10, but they're not all public.
Right.
They're probably, they're probably the private correct.
So isn't there a meeting on the 28th, April 28th?
Yes, there is.
With this, you know, coordination?
On the summit.
On the summit.
And then there's a more global one up the FBI office in San Mateo.
So we do those sorts of things. And I think they're, in a community where we have a lot of industrial, you know, and we talk about quality of life there, and you've got industry, and you've got freeways, that's where, you know, the focus on economic development, you focus on other things. Here, it's quality of life, and quality of life here is protecting its residents, and we have 10 schools. Schools are a part of that quality of life.
George, I know, I know you're doing a lot of things in that area, but the thing that really, I was troubled with is the different protocols. Like we're being, I was hearing from Redwood City and Postwork, and what I heard the chief say, just what he was saying was that we're going to address that, come up with a standard protocol, basically.
Madam Mayor, on another point, this, not intending to be an exhaustive list of all the things that police department, traffic is huge. And it's not necessarily identified up there too, but if we, if we start down that path, I'm sure that I could make that list, at least another 10 bullets on there, was not a watch effort.
Well, I just wanted to make sure there are...
But that is a really good point.
And then, you know, I know that the police department provides protection crowd control for political events, and this is something that, you know, we're seeing more and more of all the time. And I know that residents have come to me and other council members and residents about needing reimbursement, and I know that that's like pushing the boulder up the hill, but if we can just, you know, continue to try to identify how much it's costing the town and, you know, do our paper trail of, you know, how we're trying to get reimbursed, because that's, I think we're going to see more and more of it. Large social events, the circus club, obviously, the horse shows and private parties and things. And I know that the force plays a big role with that in, you know, doing traffic and crowd control.
We're going to submit a bill to anyone who's got an address, so.
Okay.
But we also are going to get some national press on it too. In the Wall Street Journal, we talked to a reporter from there who's going to do a story on the impact on local governments and local communities when there are these fundraisers that occur, and they're not getting reimbursed for them. You know, it's not just a, hey, it's a great thing to have the president come visit us. It's, it's a cost to have the president come visit us, and we shouldn't be the community paying that debt.
Just to put it in perspective, I set the command course here at So We Like School. We have at least 150 people, local people, I'm not talking about the president's folks, Secret Service. I'm talking about local sheriffs, other PDs, volunteers. It is a big operation for Atherton, for any department, to have a policeman that comes in and, you know, lands, lands somewhere, goes to a private residence, and then to another private residence. That being said, last year I had a very candid conversation with Secret Service and advised them that we're a small town, we have a small force, and we don't, we don't have the folks to do all the things they want. But this community, larger community of the county, particularly the Chiefs Association, has a great working relationship, and none of us can do this alone. So we have to work together to pull these off.
Just out of curiosity, how do you get the other neighboring law enforcement agencies to help? I know when, there was one of these events in my neighbor's house, the sniper in the tree in my backyard was from St. Carlos.
Oh, gee.
And the police cars blocking my street were from Redwood City.
Well, the first thing that happens is we look at the Almanac this week, when the president started. And we called the Secret Service, says, that's how it happens, like, we called the Secret Service. They said, how did you guys find that out? They said, well, we read the Almanac this week. And so it went from there, from an OES level, Officer Emergency Service, county level, the information goes out, and the initial planning meetings begin almost immediately once we know.
Driven by?
Driven by the county OES.
So it's county.
And other agencies. And in fact, the, the lead people on the team are generally the county folks, and then the cities that are going to have, be affected by the visit either directly or surrounding areas.
The lieutenant actually had a leadership role within the...
Yeah. For Atherton, Lieutenant Joe Wade was the ORC officer that ran through the city. Did an excellent job running it, recommending it.
He did the robo, you know, call. And that's really important. And again, I know this isn't budget level, but the more information we can get out to our residents to alert them of any potential street closures or circus blockage or, you know, closures, you know, the better. And I know that we're kind of hampered not knowing the schedules, but...
Yeah, and it's a changing schedule, and it was changing all the way up until the day of the event.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
The question, the legal question of where, whose responsibility did something happen to one of the schools? Is it clear that it's their responsibility, or how would you, how would you articulate who's responsible for something that would happen that's a terrorist or something?
Depends on really what the incident is, but if it's, obviously, if it's within our jurisdiction, the police response is our responsibility.
So you are primarily responsible for the...
Sure.
...protection of the children while they're in school?
I think you'll find the chief tell you that you draw a line around the town of Atherton, he's responsible for the safety and well-being of everybody within that boundary.
Boundary.
Including people driving through. I mean, the safety doesn't, and in today's real world, it doesn't stop and start at the boundary either. That's what they, he was just talking about all these cars from out of the area. If there's a major event, if there was a catastrophic event like happened in San Carlos a couple of years ago, if, was that?
San Bernardino.
San Bernardino, okay, that started with us. San Bernardino, you will find police agencies, fire agencies from all over get sucked in because of the county's OES response system. So there's no, you know, there's no straight answer. There's no liability issue, and from a legal standpoint, when, when the need arises and they start calling in, there's mutual aid protocols that are in place already for, for all the agencies. And they just start unfolding, and people start responding in accordance with those, with what the county is saying they need to cover these, these events.
One person for 10 schools? I just, I don't know.
You mean a SRO, a student retention?
And then there's no, there's no legal requirement that you have an SRO.
We don't have one now.
We don't have that now. We only said you had one.
No, we have, we have, we used to have one, but budget cuts, cut them out.
There's no legal requirement that you have this. Like a dare officer, that's a nice thing for someone to do, but there's no legal requirement. And in fact, there's, it's scary, but there's no legal requirement that we have a police or fire department at all.
Well, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Congressman.
For the public's sake?
You have none.
In the Constitution?
You have none. There's no law that says you have to have a police department. In fact, there's a lot of towns that don't, and it's provided by the county sheriffs. So there's no legal requirement that we have to have.
Well, how does the chief feel? Does he feel like you've got, from strictly a school sector, do you feel you've got adequate, I don't know what adequate means, but in your mind, enough people to monitor?
We've had this conversation before. There is no way that Atherton Police Department can staff for any worst-case scenario that could possibly happen in a school, just like any other town or cities up and down the mid-zone. That's why we have the mutual aid response, and that's why we pulled together to work on these things. The school resource officer, that program was never designed to provide security for a campus. That is a resource officer to work with various school faculties, to gather intel, to help advise them on school safety things. I had a school resource officer that was on campus during the shooting in another jurisdiction I worked at, and, you know, that, that situation came out good because he happened to be there. Like, he could have very well been at one of, a number of other schools, but it just so happened to work out that way. There's a lot of misunderstanding about what the, the purpose is with respect to the school resource officer program. But they are extremely helpful in working with faculty, and working with problem kids, patrulancy agents, and all of those kinds of things that are, you need to our schools.
Our responsibility runs into private schools as well as...
Yeah, the education code requires them that they have emergency plans to deal with emergency and disaster situations. But they don't, they don't design those in a vacuum. Obviously, they work with police, fire, medical emergency.
We're part of their plans.
We're part of that plan.
Chief, and the expenses we'll be looking at in a minute, what are you doing staffing-wise? What changes are you making?
Well, I think we'll follow along when we get to that.
Yep.
Long conversation about that.
As you know, the, the police department's faced with what we have now in terms of, we talk on limited staffing, base-level staffing, to meet the basic needs of the community, provide the basic coverage that's required out there. Got a total of 25 staff, one chief, one lieutenant, one admin.
25 staff that's budgeted but not filled.
Well, if they're, if they could be filled, they would be filled. They're, they're not filled, a couple of them aren't filled now because we're in the midst of recruiting to have vacancies filled, or there's workers' comp issues, or there's retirements and other things that are occurring that put the police department, you know, upside down in terms of staffing ability. So there's 25 personnel, one...
Looking back in time, is there any kind of estimate as to what percent of the time the police department is usually 100% filled? 70% of the time, 60% of the time? Certainly not 100% of the time.
Yeah, I think that, that's a struggle that not only Atherton PD does, but in your organization. For instance, when I was in Santa Rosa Police Department, we were authorized to have 176 sworn personnel. I very seldom got much over 163, somewhere in that. We were always in a recruiting process trying to fill those positions. It's very, very difficult to get it 100%. And when you do, it's just a matter of time before you lose somebody, you do retirement, long-term injury, resigns, move on, moves on to another job, so all of those things. So the succession planning is critical.
So nobody anticipates that they're going to have a certain gap there on a permanent basis?
Well, you know, law enforcement, we don't work in a, in a bubble. We've got, had a couple of our staff out on the road recently, one sworn, one non-sworn, and they got rear-ended by somebody. Well, that put them out of the...
Rear-end of the accident.
Traffic collision. They got rear-ended out on the streets, and so there was no way to count that.
No, I understand that, but you go back in history, you know, there's, I would think there'd be some sort of a norm in terms of gap that a lot of police departments maintain over a period of years. Maybe they go up and down a little bit, but...
Yeah, I think, we have some pretty good records over there, believe it or not. I found a lot of this stuff when I was doing the, the review of the department. And one of the things that was really interesting, going back nearly 10 years ago, you, the department had 28.5 staffing compared to our 25 now, and they had that all the way up to when the budget war was started. And then what you saw was a reduction of staff and an escalation of the overtime.
Yeah, that's what we're having.
And that's one of the things we're trying to address. The other thing is, the whole recruiting process is such an involved process. From the time you put out the flyers, or put them on websites, you're able to get interviews, sit down with the people. If, if they even make that cut, are they eligible for the academy? How do they do in the academy? Do we pay them through the academy as a police trainee? Or do we make them go on their own and pick them up halfway? Or we just look at people that have graduated from the academy? Then we're not through after we do our backgrounds and everything else. And if they're academy grad, we still have a field training officer program that can take four to six months. So that officer could take up to a year to get identified, recruited, trained, and put he or she by themselves in the field. It's not like hiring the plumber. Get a certified journeyman plumber, you put him in order.
So given that, fact that probably overtime's going to cost you more because it's a higher hour cost kind of a thing. I would think that some sort of a, looking back at history and knowing what the gap is and whatnot, you could, you could do a arithmetic estimate as to what you ought to be shooting for in, in the way of ongoing recruiting type of thing to try to keep that overtime down.
Well, I think our, I think our focus here is, is pretty well, it's not, it's not a matter of, is it?
I think it's Mr. Collins.
It's not a matter of increasing the head count for the sake of increasing the head count. But one, at least having a position that the department staff can recruit against and start going down that, because we can't put out flyers if we don't make positions.
So can I, do we use a recruiting firm, or do you have to do all of the...
We do it all.
You do it all?
Yeah.
Would it be reasonable to maybe, I mean, are there police recruiting firms that you can, you know, contract with that just have a pipeline of candidates, maybe?
We're, we're in that pipeline. Most police departments are in that pipeline. It's not, the challenge, the challenge is, you know, if someone's out on workers' comp, or we have those two officers that were rear-ended and retired, those two...
And they'll come back, right?
Those two officers may come back to their positions, or they may be working.
One left permanent, and one permanent. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to add to that, my experience has been that you don't usually see recruiting firms hire for police officers and sergeants, sometimes at commanders, certainly deputy chiefs, and chiefs, and chiefs. That's a broader net that you're casting. You may need some of the help with traveling, or doing some of the backgrounds and stuff, at least the initial piece of that. But we, we do pretty well with our websites, with Cow Chiefs, PLA, Cora, going to the academies, get the message out that you want to leave it open, open recruiting. So, but if we're, if we're, if we do make it to full staff, even if we have somebody that's on long-term disability, we can't start the recruiting process.
Right.
Then we're paying overtime to backfill that person.
So they may be on workers' comp, like I was starting to say there, but we can't recruit for that position because we don't have an authorized vacancy beyond our limited staffing that we have now.
So would, could council change the authorization of the number, you know, kind of go ahead and step to what Vice Mayor...
That's exactly what we're talking about.
...says, is to, you know, mathematically, you know, kind of ramp up over what we actually need so that we are authorized to, you're going, you're going to address that here?
Yep, that's exactly what we're talking about.
Oh, well, okay.
That's exactly it. So we just, it kind of explains why we need that, that extra buffer. And so this budget reflects two additional officer positions within the budget to address that need to, to have that continuous recruitment going on. Doesn't mean that those officer positions will be filled. They may be vacant part of the year. In fact, if we fill them now, we may have a vacancy six months, as the chief was explaining. Six months later, that creates another vacancy. So there, but there could be a continuous recruitment going on with those two additional vacancies. But they do impact bottom-line budget because they're positioned.
They do if they're, if they're filled 100%.
Correct. If they're not, they'll have a surplus at the end of the year.
Jared, do you know what then, though, you know, public perception is going to be, you know?
Well, sure.
Council authorizes hiring of two more, you know?
But that goes for the territory.
Oh, just get ready.
Madam Mayor, there's also two checks and balances here for those positions. You have the city manager that can directly not to fill them, or run a vacancy based on... We certainly have the council that can do that as well.
Okay. Just because they're authorized doesn't mean that we can authorize the...
You can unauthorize.
Approve the...
It gives them flexibility, is what it does.
Yeah. So I, I have a question about 2011, 2012 revenue versus 2012, 2013. Why didn't we go hand 2013 or 2014?
Oh, the revenue 11, 12? Do you have that background?
Yeah. The other finance, it was 59,000 in 11, 12. And this year we projected about 40,000. Also, the difference is we got some grants that we booked in there. Grants are also part of police revenue. There was an ABAD grant.
That was in 2011, 2012?
That was in 11, 12.
ABAD grant?
Yes, ma'am.
That we don't have anymore?
That this year we only budgeted 7,000, and we received 7,800 at, at mid-year as an adjustment. But a lot of that's because of that, their post-reimbursement also. And post-reimbursement is kind of the one that is kind of, it could be a lot more or a lot less, but we, we do send, and Chief could talk more about this, but the post-reimbursement is, is for the training of police officers, mandated training, that we get reimbursed back from the state of California. So that, that one, you know, we could budget 30,000 and then end up only getting 15,000, but that's one that we, we don't budget so high because we don't know how that training is going to happen, if we can send someone to training because of staff levels. But last, that, that year it was 20,000 in post-reimbursement, and this year we only budgeted 10,500. We adjusted it up. It was originally at 7,000, and at mid-year we adjusted it up to 10,500 or to measure up with the actuals.
So the, the cost of those two positions, to get back to the question about further... Roughly $400,000 increase in expenditures year to year is, is quite high at the full budget number. So when the chief and I were talking about it this morning, one of the thoughts was, you know, we're up for renewal of our parcel tax in November. There's been discussions of whether that, that should increase or not. We could budget for these positions at six months, put them in at January, and that would half that dollar amount. Put them in January 1st and budget for a little more overtime for six months. And if the parcel tax renewal goes through with an increase, if that's proposed by the council and the community and it passes, then put those two positions in and leave the overtime budget at a lower level. If it doesn't pass, then bring it back to the council for consideration of whether to actually put them in or not instead of budgeting...
But the 400,000, it isn't just for those two positions?
No, there's, they cost roughly 300...
46.
46,000. Two, because there's not, that's not basically just the salaries, there's the car, and the uniforms and the...
PERS.
PERS.
PERS, that 28% of their salary. Every dollar they're paid, 28 cents. Those are CalPERS.
That's current.
Current.
Right. And there's no adjustment in that number for contract negotiations because there's no...
No, nothing in there yet for that.
It's current.
What about PERS? The papers the other day, they said they would have a 50% increase during the next five years in their contributions.
They were supposed to vote on that tomorrow, and it's a suggested 50% plan to, to increase the contributions by the employer, 50 percentage points, basically. I was corrected in response, I put a line to that. It's 50 percentage points increase, so PERS rate could go up.
Are the side funds supposed to mitigate that?
They were, that's what happened in the early 2000s. PERS created that side fund to mitigate that impact and soften it, smooth it out over a period of years. The new recommendation from CalPERS is not to do that side fund, it's just to...
Well, I thought the side fund was our creation, not theirs.
No, they were CalPERS' creation. It's part of their smoothing program in 2000. They were proposing increases, so they, they stopped the increase and said, okay, if we stop your rate here, what's the gap between what we need to get you funded and what we are now? So they created the side fund for that gap. All the agencies got side funds on the local safety side as well as local miscellaneous, and we're giving a funding horizon to pay those off. Most of it was a 30-year funding horizon for each of them. And that's the last time they created the side fund, so they haven't done it again. The new PERS policy recommendation is not to create the side fund, but to rather increase the rate up and pay it off over five years.
Well, if it is 10% a year, is that, how much of this is reflected in here?
None of this reflected in here.
None?
None of the proposal from CalPERS is reflected in here.
Well, that's because, I mean, yeah, I mean, if they do, it doesn't take effect until 2015, 2016.
Yeah, that's true as well.
So, you know, it's, it's something that's in the future. And it would be blended over six years, right?
Correct. Over a five-year period.
A five, or a six year.
It could be six, but, yeah.
Chief? Just to talk about the, the cost of the two officers, fully burdened, top step, the worst cases are $326,000 annually for those two positions.
So you would have that if we put them in January 1st instead of...
And that's so.
Yeah.
326.
Does Menlo Park have a school resource officer?
I believe they do.
Don't, I mean, I'm not certain, but I think they do. Redwood City?
Uh, yes.
I think we need that, just as an aside, I think it would be helpful to us if we had an analysis of what services other jurisdiction police forces are providing, like a school resource officer, how many for their per capita traffic or whatever, and their salaries and benefits, you know, all of that. Yeah. Can, is that public information? Can you just put that together for me, Mr. President?
That's an easy one. Yeah, I would like to see that. And, and the school resource officer, does it have to be a sworn officer, or it's not a sworn officer, is that right?
I have not seen that program with a sworn personnel. Their program maybe, but, you know. I think part of the impact is the squad bar and the uniform on campus.
Right.
That relationship with a police officer, that building. I would, would caution anybody that wants to prepare jurisdictions to make sure we're measuring apples to apples, because we have nine schools in Atherton. And so that's probably a little unusual for a town our size.
And since we're a little unusual, and I know that it has happened in other cities, where the schools have actually wanted a school resource officer, and they've actually compensated the town for that jurisdiction, is that possible here?
Well, at one time they paid the full freight on a school resource officer here at the town of Atherton, but as budget constraints impacted them as well as us, they slowly backed off to 50% of the...
But the new environment, though, I would think they'd be more willing to come back and so...
Yeah. I was driving through Houston the day of the, of the Connecticut, and a superintendent of one of the school districts said they have a system already that everybody that comes in that building has got a identification, they call it STARS or something like, it's a system that most of the schools in Houston use. And, you know, every, every adult had to have a, a identification card on their personality at school every day. And I think they locked the schools all day. And I think they lock the schools all day. Here we got open campuses. But I, I want to look at that because I, I, I was so impressed with what they're already doing, and they were talking about what else they could do.
Yeah, I would think with the way it's been doing, that maybe they would be more interested in having that now. So maybe we should, you know, re-approach the schools and say, it's an option, you know, we'd like to provide it, but...
We'll work with Menlo Park PD, I mean, because we've got public schools that we share with Menlo Park, we've got public schools that we share with Redwood City, so...
Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's Department as well, yeah.
Something, simply something we can bring up to them and say, if we wanted to add a school resource officer, we'd be willing to do that as long as it was a partnership.
Does the sheriff's department have a resource officer in the schools?
I believe they do.
They do. I think that one I found, I'm looking. Redwood City has one. Menlo Park did at a point in time, I don't know if they still do, because I found some guy who has it on his resume that he was the school resource officer at Menlo Park PD. But I don't find anyone jumping out saying that they do still have one.
Well, they don't have that, but we do MA, so...
Well, we do.
I don't know what schools they have except the primary, I mean, elementary and the...
The university. Yeah. So that's where we were heading with the staffing with the police department. And it's just, this was just an opportunity to bring to the council as a discussion.
Well, it's right, there's a political problem, we'll put in quotes, but from a realistic operational standpoint, it seems like it makes all kinds of sense to...
It, it does. It, it helps the chief...
You look at overtime and all the other things, you know, you're, you're going to end up, I think, pretty much the same, same spot, but the, the staff take care of the problems as it comes, whatever we want to do today.
Yeah. So, you know, the, like I said, the one part discussion was to do it after the parcel tax.
Yeah, but that's not a bad strategy, yeah.
Chief, just a couple other things. There's some intangibles I think the council should be aware of, and that is, we have officers working 12-hour shifts and going to court and all the things that they do, traveling to considerable distances to get to the department. It's not just a question of having overtime, it's a question of whether we can get them to come in. Once, you know, once they've worked 16 hours straight, they have to have the next day off. Can't have people driving around that are tired and don't want to overwork them, and that there is a take factor when you're doing this business, even if it is slow.
Is that 12 hours mandatory then?
Yeah, we're on 12-hour shift, much like many agencies on the, on the peninsula. Probably is the most, out of seven different work schedules I can think of for cops, it's probably one of the most efficient, but it does have its drawbacks.
Well, I'm just going to put a plug in for the proposed new town center, the proposed new working conditions, because to ask our police officers to come and work 12 hours, even though they are out in the field most of that time, they do have to come back to the department and get their assignments and, and do all the in, in-office work. And if the conditions are so dire, I mean, it can be demoralizing. And so I want to send the message that there is a group of residents that have been formed for the master plan of the new town center, police department, civic center development. And, you know, hopefully within the next few years, we'll be able to have a new environment for our officers to be proud of to come and work for us.
Elizabeth, there's another thing you should understand with respect to the police department that's totally unique and doesn't apply to anybody else. There's something out there called 4850. And 4850 of the labor code says that anytime a police officer or fireperson, but that didn't count, police officers injured, suffers a worker's compensation type of injury and they're disabled and can't work, they don't go out on worker's compensation, they go out on something called 4850 time. And that is 100% of their salary has to be continued to be paid to them for up to a year. So even though, even if they're out on workers' comp, they still get their full salary under 4850. Now, if another, if Teresa were to go out on an injury, you know, a typewriter fell on her, and she went on, terrible injury, and she went out, she would be stuck with worker's compensation at, at a fraction of her salary and no other backfill. And so police officers, by virtue of the fact that they are, whenever they're on temporary disability, get 100% of their salary. It costs the town huge amounts of money. Not just the town, any, any police department, it costs them huge amounts of money. And you can't, you can't put them on disability or lay them off or anything else until they've exhausted their one year of 4850 money. So for a year, even if they're, you know that they're never going to come back, it's a free ride. And at the end of that year, essentially, even if they're going to go off on permanent disability, they, they, then they, they do go off, but for that year, it costs you the full burden of their salary.
And that's a state law?
State law.
Or federal law?
State law, it's a state law.
So, I mean, to the extent that we can create, you know, good working conditions in our office and facilities as well as in our town with safety and roads, then hopefully that doesn't happen so often. Charles, you fine?
Sure. The last departmental category, non-departmental, Robert, can I run down some of the things that are in this one? You can see in the graph there, the expenditures drop.
Yeah. Non-departmental, as we alluded to earlier, most of it is like liability insurance. The biggest thing here that we can...
General liability insurance.
General liability, exactly, is the contribution, the solid waste for 84,000 was for this year, so next year, the 12, the 13, 14 budget is not in there, so that's part of that decrease where you see from 766 to 616,000. Also, we...
It's solid waste?
A true out.
That's right, true out.
Oh, the true out, I see.
The payment that we made to them.
Yes.
Is that all paid off?
Yes, sir. It's, it's all paid off. So that's part of the, why the decrease in the, in that budget. Other contract services is another thing where we had decreased some amounts in there, and that went down about 50,000. Then we had, the other thing that we have in there is IT infrastructure placement that's, that's to fix certain things within our departments. So that's like the catch-all, that includes like the IT, the server room. We have in there virtual server implementation, website design.
This is where the phone system was, those sorts of projects.
Yeah, so this, this becomes the, the catch-all for things that are, for, as a whole specific for, for the town, and so...
Something like, I know we're not talking about special funds, but I'm going to bring it up anyway. The direct cost associated with the library, maintenance that comes out of somebody's budget and so forth, how, how does that flow out of that budget into, where does it go?
It, it's part of the library donor fund. Maintenance and stuff that has to be done, specific.
Because that's something we need to take a look at this time around as to whether we continue payments out of our donor plans or on our books or bill a county for it out of the curfew or something.